Your host, we are live and recording.
Much for joining us this afternoon for our public hearing and land use meeting. I will call this meeting to order if you all rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Attorney Garcia, do we have a certification of the agenda today?
You do, the county attorney's office has reviewed all items on this agenda where proper notification has been provided where necessary and otherwise you have jurisdiction over all matters.
Thank you, do commissioners have any disclosures for items on this agenda?
I have none, thank you.
And I have none either, so with that we'll move into item two, which is our land use meeting agenda items, we have one item in that category, item two A Sterling Ranch filing number seven A final plat project file SB 2023-058 Brett Thomas from staff presenting, Brett.
Good afternoon, commissioners Brett Thomas representing Plan Services, project before you is Sterling Ranch filing seven A final plat project number SB 2023-058 Susan Beckman with Sterling Ranch Development Company is the project representative on behalf of the owner Sterling Ranch LLC, the applicant proposes 514 residential lots, two super block lots for future development, 36 tracks and associated public and private roads on 171.23 acres. The intent to the final plat process is to provide for the review of final engineering plans subdivision improvement agreement, public dedications and other legal agreements. Final plat process begins with the middle of an application, following a review period by referral agencies in the public and acceptance of engineered plans, the request is considered by the board at a public meeting, no public comments were received, all referral agency comments are outlined in the referral agency response report as well as the referral response letters attached to the staff report, the applicant response letter to referral comments is also included in the staff report. The site is located in the northwest portion of Douglas County between Chatfield State Park and Roxborough State Park, site is located north of Waterton Road, south of Public Service Company of Colorado Transmission Lines, Roxborough Park Road is to the west of the site, to the east of the site is Sterling Ranch filings four C, five A and five B as well as Middle Fork Street. This is an aerial of the property, portions of Sterling Ranch filings four C, five A and five B are to the east, unplanted portions of Sterling Ranch Development are located to the north of the site across the Piesco Transmission Lines, Sterling Ranch five C, the Larry D Moore Water Treatment Plant and additional unplanted portions of Sterling Ranch Development are generally located south of the site. Site was rezoned to plan development with approval of the Sterling Ranch PD by the board in 2013, associated with the approval Sterling Ranch PD, the board also approved the Sterling Ranch water supply standards appeal for certain provisions to section 18A of the zoning resolution. In 2021, the board approved the amended and restated water appeal, which among other changes allowed for the cab to propose alternate minimum water demand standards as part of future development applications. In October of 2022, the board reviewed and approved preliminary plan seven, consisting of 1,667 residential lots, five super block lots, 117 tracks and associated public roads and private drives of which this site is a part, filing seven A is the first final plat proposed within preliminary plan seven. This slide is an overview of the final plat exhibit, the applicant proposes 514 residential lots, two super block lots and 36 tracks, site design provides approximately 80 acres of open space overall, including 50 acres of Burns Regional Park, the layout of the final plat is consistent with the approved preliminary plan seven. These are the approval standards applicable to final plat, in addition, the water appeal approval standards apply to this application, detailed assessment of the project's compliance with all standards is included in the staff report, all engineered plans, studies and reports required for filing seven A have been reviewed and approved by engineering. Staff has evaluated the final plat request in accordance with article five of the subdivision resolution, should the board find that the approval standards for the final plat are met, the following proposed conditions should be considered for inclusion in the motion. Condition number one, prior to the board's action on the final plat, subdivision improvements agreement intergovernmental agreement for filing seven A shall be approved by the board. Please note a minor edit to condition number two from the staff report, the applicant has requested easements be included, so condition number two now reads, prior to recordation of the final plat, the applicant shall provide evidence that necessary Denver Water License agreements and easements have been obtained. Condition number three, prior to recordation of the final plat, the board shall accept necessary off-site blanket access and drainage easements. Condition number four, prior to recordation of the final plat, the applicant shall convey all of the right-of-way for Ordway Drive, that is east of the 100-foot Denver Water Board property to Douglas County, either by separate recorded plat or special warranty deed. Condition number five, prior to recordation of the final plat, the applicant shall provide payment in the amount of $1,500 per single-family dwelling unit to the Douglas County School District for capital mitigation, for multifamily dwelling units within the final plat, the applicant shall provide payment in the amount of $750 per unit to the Douglas County School District for capital mitigation prior to site plan and site improvement plan approval. Condition number six, prior to recordation of the final plat, the applicant shall provide payment to Douglas County for the pro-rata share costs towards improvements to the state highway system in accordance with the commitments set forth in the Sterling Ranch PD. Condition number seven, prior to recordation of the final plat, property within filing seven A shall be included into one or more of the Sterling Ranch Metropolitan Districts. Condition number eight, prior to recordation of the final plat, the private telecommunications easement shall be recorded and reception numbers noted on the final plat exhibit. Condition number nine, prior to recordation of the final plat, technical corrections to the final plat exhibit shall be made to the satisfaction of Douglas County. Condition number 10, Colorado Division of Wildlife Literature shall be made available to both prospective homeowners and home buyers concerning possible presence of wildlife and shall be available at all times. Condition number 11, a burrowing owl survey shall be performed if any earth moving will begin between March 15th and October 31st. And condition number 12, all commitments and promises made by the applicant or the applicant's representative during the public meeting and/or agreed to in writing and included in the public record have been relied upon by the Board of County Commissioners in approving the application, therefore such approval is conditioned upon the applicant's full satisfaction of all such commitments and promises. Section 504.06 of the subdivision resolution sets forth the parameters for the board's determination on final plat request as noted on this slide. This concludes the presentation on the final plat for Sterling Ranch filing seven A, staffs available take questions at this time, otherwise Sterling Ranch and its representatives are here to present the request.
Great, thanks Brett for that presentation, any questions for staff?
I do have a question for the county attorney, so did we approve the SIAI GA on the consent agenda or was it moved to this hearing as I requested? It is moved to this hearing, it was pulled off the consent agenda?
Let me double check. It was on consent.
Okay, yeah, that's what I had emailed you that we usually did the SIAI GAs at the public hearing with this part.
Yes, the contract itself can be approved in consent agenda on the business meeting, but I can see why this would be approved at this time.
Because it is a condition of approval.
Yes.
Okay, anything else? Brett, I wanted to thank you for your reference to the comprehensive master plan, I think the analysis there was exceptional, you always do great work, but as one commissioner and a former planning commissioner, I always like that level of granularity with the CMP. I don't have any further questions for you and certainly open to the applicant making a presentation if they are prepared.
Good afternoon, I'm Susan Beckman, S U S A N B E C K M A N, the entitlement director for Sterling Ranch Development Company, 8155 Piney Ridge Avenue Sterling Ranch, Colorado 80125. Thank you Commissioner Layden and Commissioner Thomas for taking your time this afternoon to hear our land use case, and I also want to thank the Douglas County Planning Staff, Public Works and Engineering Staff for your professionalism and hard work. I'd like to introduce the Sterling Ranch team, today I have Brock Snethills, President Sterling Ranch Development Company with me, and Kevin Johnc, Director of Engineering, Sterling Ranch Development Company, and Navia Morris, she is our new intern from Sterling Ranch and you met with her a few weeks ago when Vanderbilt came and met with the commissioners at Douglas County, so we're really excited to have her onboard. As is customary with Sterling Ranch, we bring our experts to the hearing in case you have technical questions, we want to make sure that you're answered properly and accurately so you feel comfortable with supporting our projects. We have with us today Brian Hart, Professional Engineer Associate Principal from Redland, Cassie Slade, Principal Fox Tuttle, Curtis Davidson, Senior Landscape Architect PCS Group, Jake Widded, Attorney Brownstein Hyatt Farber Schreck, and Pam Grover I see is with us today, she is the representative from Sterling Ranch Dominion Water and Sanitation District, thank you Pam for joining us today. Sterling Ranch is the number one best-selling master plan community in the metro area and we have held that honor for four years in a row, I'd just like to give you a little bit of an update since the last time I was here, as you know Sterling Ranch was approved in 2013, the PD was approved for a maximum density of 12,050 homes, we have currently over 2,300 occupied homes and over 6,600 residents, we have three active villages, Providence, Ascent, Prospect, we're very proud of our diverse housing stock, we have single-family townhomes, multifamily apartments and multi-generational homes, today we are at 20% build out and our build out will be in approximately 20 years. So preliminary plan seven was approved unanimously by the Board of County Commissioners in 2022, seven A is the first plat to the preliminary plan seven and it adds a new village area legends to Sterling Ranch and it's the first plat in legends, so preliminary plan seven, or yes, was the red outline, and then seven A plat is the blue outline with the segmentation map in the middle of it. Seven A is approximately 172 acres and is located north of Waterton Road, this is Waterton Road, and east of Roxborough Road, Roxborough Road is right here, it is also northeast of Willow Creek Wildlife Corridor and Burns Park is lines the eastern edge of the seven A plat. 514 homes are planned for this plat, they're all single-family, 344 single detached homes and 173 attached townhome lots, there are two super block lots set aside for future commercial, retail or multifamily, as you know, these super block lots will come back to you in a minor development plat land use process and be heard by the Board of County Commissioners. Seven A is a logical extension of the infrastructure of Sterling Ranch on the other filings, we connect open space, utilities, transportation systems, and it really does complement the other villages, Village Providence, Ascent and Prospect. As Mr. Thomas mentioned, the final plat approval process is to provide for a review of the final engineering plans, the subdivision improvement agreement, which we actually got noticed today, Commissioner Thomas said it was going to be on the business meeting and that's why we came early, the subdivision improvement agreement, public dedications and legal agreements, and to review the compliance of the Douglas County approval criteria. Over the last six months, Douglas County Engineering and Planning have been reviewing the construction drawings, they are approved and have been signed by Douglas County, Sterling Ranch Community Authority Board, Dominion Water and Sanitation District and South Metro Fire, also the subdivision improvement agreements, public dedication and other legal agreements are in good order and are in your packet, the Douglas County Staff Report of seven A reflects that the final plat layout substantially conforms to the approval of preliminary plan seven. So you will notice in your packet that we have two sets of construction drawings, we have seven A North and seven A South, we did them in tandem, it is a very large plat and that is, it's one of the largest, it is the largest that we've ever developed and that is why it is in two pieces, seven A North and seven A South. So all that is left in the approval right now is to go through the approval criteria and as I go through the next slides, I've organized them in numerical order, so for organizational purposes, and on the slides where we meet or exceed the approval criteria, I have put a green check mark, and we're going to be looking at approval criteria 50301 through 50309. 50301, seven A conforms with the 2040 comprehensive master plan and I will agree, the staff report did a great job pointing out how we align with the comprehensive master plan, but I would like to point out some that we think are really important, goal 21 proposes urban development in designated urban areas and we are in the Chatfield urban area, goal 22 provides appropriate regional trails, the seven A application utilizes the natural landscape related to east Willow Creek and we're going to talk about that a little bit more in the presentation, and dedicates land to Burns Regional Park and in the future Heritage Regional Park. Goal 71 prolongs the life of water resources, as you know Sterling Ranch minimizes water consumption and brings renewable resources to Douglas County, at this time Sterling Ranch is served with 100% renewable water. And goal 61 and 62 encourages roundabouts in lieu of traffic lights and shorter street lengths with interconnected trails and sidewalks that promote a walkable community, seven A is an amazingly walkable, bikeable type of neighborhood, it's going to be really great. 50302, the design elements established in Article Four, Section 404, we comply with, Article Four is really all about density, connectivity and design, the 514 single-family homes adhere to the allowable density prescribed by the Sterling Ranch Neighborhood Plan and the PD and we are not asking for additional density. Seven A plots, final plat lots conform to the size allowable for character zones four and five of the Sterling Ranch PD and the neighborhood plan, the construction documents reflect that vehicular, pedestrian and bicycles can safely and efficiently connect to the other villages in Sterling Ranch and in the rest of the Chatfield Basin, and our natural terrain, our drainage ways, riparian areas seamlessly integrate into our community, our neighboring communities and the Chatfield Basin. 50303, we conform with section 18A and the Sterling Ranch Water Appeal, Dominion Water and Sanitation District, the wholesale water provider for Sterling Ranch Development Company will supply renewable water to the Sterling Ranch Community Authority Board that is our retail water provider, which will be delivered by extending infrastructure from existing adjacent filings, so the infrastructure is already there, Dominion Water Supply Portfolio was approved in preliminary plan seven and remains the same. In your packet is an opinion from the state water engineer that confirms that the water supply is adequate based on the determination that the amount of water required annually to serve the subdivision is currently physically available. In the seven A water packet, you have a commitment to serve letter from Dominion and a will serve letter from the Sterling Ranch Community Authority Board. 50304, approval criteria, seven A provides for wastewater collection treatment, wastewater collection and a treatment system, and that will be provided by Dominion through contracts with Roxborough Conveyance Infrastructure and will be sent to the South Platte Renew Wastewater Treatment Facility in Inglewood. The wastewater infrastructure for seven A will connect to existing infrastructure in two locations. To serve the southern half of seven A, that area, you will have a sanitary sewer line that was approved with five C minor development plat, it's already been approved and actually it's already being built, that line will run down Roxborough Park Road and hit that pipeline and it's currently being built. The northern half up here will be served with a new gravity sanitary sewer lift station and force main that extends west over here to the Willow Creek Lift Station, and this is just a good illustration that shows the connectivity of infrastructure in Sterling Ranch from the Titan Road Lift Station down to the Roxborough Lift Station to Willow Creek Lift Station and on to Roxborough Sanitation, and the green square is approximately where the new lift station will be. Approval criteria 50305 provides appropriate soil conditions, a geotechnical site development study prepared by AG Wassinar for seven A identifies all areas which may involve soil conditions presenting hazards or requiring special precautions, as you know, we have expansive soils in Sterling Ranch and as a precautionary measure, we over excavate every lot, seven A will follow all the recommendations for soil mitigation outlined in the geotechnical report submitted. So I now like to take a little break and I'd like to introduce Kevin Johnc, the Sterling Ranch Director of Engineering, Kevin led the preparation of the seven A plat and worked closely with neighboring property owners, Douglas County staff and urban drainage on some really cool regional drainage improvements, so I'll just let Kevin walk you through approval criteria for 50307.
Thank you Susan, thank you commissioners, my name is Kevin Johnc, J O H N K, I am the Director of Engineering for the Sterling Ranch Development Company. We have of course designed our drainage infrastructure to be in conformance with the Douglas County standards, I would like to sort of highlight kind of three items that I believe make this application unique and are worth noting by us and the board. First, as you can see from the slides, preliminary plan seven has four detention ponds identified, with this first final plat, seven A, we're going to be building three of them upfront. Now this came about through a process of collaboration where we partnered with six of the adjacent landowners to us, they allowed us access to their property for us to conduct drainage surveys to assess the conditions on their property so that we could design our facilities to not only improve drainage conditions for us, but for our neighbors and you know, the Titan Road region to the north as well. Now the next area I'd like to highlight is the east Willow Creek Drainage Way on the south side of our site, on the slide you'll see it at the bottom of the screen, if you had ever been out to the east Willow Creek Drainage Way in its existing condition, you would know that you know, conditions there are not great, there's a lot of erosion damage, there's rilling, gullies and there's quite a bit of trash and debris down in there. Well, with the frontage of our project, we're going to be cleaning that up completely, we're going to be reshaping a new channel, we're going to be providing new vegetation and ultimately that's going to deliver a more effective and a more aesthetic creek, one that's better for drainage, better for wildlife and is less likely to damage the landscape. Being a regional drainage improvement, we're underway on this already, as you can see by the photo, this photo was taken about two weeks ago and it showcases kind of the third and final highlight that I wanted to go over with you. Now I listed some negatives about the former east Willow Creek, the erosion, the damage, there is however, a beautiful mature cottonwood tree in the creek bed and you know, thanks to the care of our consultants and our contractors, we're going to try to save it. So as you can see from the photo, you can see the progress that we're making, but you can see how we're diverting the earth movers around the cottonwood tree in the adjacent landscape, it's quite a feat of precision when you consider how big these machines are and kind of the overall size of this construction operation. Now there's you know, no guarantees, construction is a very stressful event for a tree, but we're going to do our best to preserve it. So you know, those are the three and I just want to note that none of these would have been possible without the partnership of you know, Douglas County Engineering and Planning Staff with Mile High Flood District and of course, our consultants and our contractors, so I'm proud to be kind of showcasing them to you today. That is the drainage approval criteria, with that I'll be handing it back to Susan Beckman who will be reviewing the remaining criteria.
Thank you Kevin. We're now going to move to approval criteria 50307, seven A provides adequate transportation project improvements, transportation improvements, so access to the site for seven A is provided by two primary roadways, we have Sterling Ranch Avenue that starts at Hooper Street and also Ordway Drive that will connect to Middle Fork. Ordway Drive will also run almost linear, almost to the entire seven A plat and connect Sterling Ranch Avenue with Ordway Drive. In the future, Hooper Street will connect all the way to Roxborough Park Road as well Sterling Ranch Avenue will connect to Roxborough Park Road, but at this time, the traffic counts from the Fox Tuttle Traffic Study determined that all the existing traffic could be moved to the east and existing infrastructure and our existing infrastructure can accommodate all the traffic in seven A. So we also have four roundabouts at Sterling Ranch Avenue and Ordway Drive, Sterling Ranch Avenue and Hooper Street, Hooper Street and Joyce Edum Drive and Ordway Drive at Wiggins Drive, these are going to add these roundabouts a really safe environment and we have detached sidewalks on Hooper Street and bike trails throughout, it's going to be really a very, very walkable neighborhood and village. We're going to now move to approval criteria 50308, filing seven A protects significant archaeological resources, last year Sterling Ranch Metcalf Consultants and the State Historical Preservation Office excavated Scott Springs, and I know that a lot of the county staff and county commissioners went out to observe the excavation and seven A is very close to that, but we did a class three study, Metcalf did that for us, and that report finds no archaeological, natural or historic resources will be impacted by seven A. Approval criteria 50309, open space and parks is all about available necessary services and so I want to point out that over 30% of preliminary plan seven that you approved in 2022 was dedicated for open space or parks, that's 157 acres that were dedicated to be preserved, and as the planning staff mentioned, that over 80 acres of open space will be dedicated in seven A, 50 of those acres will be to Burns Park. 50 of those acres will be to Burns Park. But I would like to point out Track U, this big greenway in the middle of the 7A final plat. It is going to be a neighborhood park. We aren't approving the construction drawings today, but it'll have to go through a separate location and extent through the Community Authority Board. But the Community Authority Board have brought to the Planning Commission in the last year four parks to be approved by the Planning Commission to be built, and I just thought it would be good for the Commissioners to see some of the amazing parks that we are actually building in Sterling Ranch. The Legends Community Park is approximately six acres, and it really runs from the very top of 7A to the southern area of 7A, and it provides through a network of paths and trails connectivity through this entire plat and also up to this super block lot, commercial site that can be commercial or retail, and on to Burns Park. The area had a lot of grading issues. It was very steep, and we could have just left it as like open space or like a park with just a trail through it. But we made the decision to flatten it out and make it functional with over 1,100 linear feet of three-tiered retaining walls. So you can see the retaining walls there that are going to run 1,100 feet on the east side of that park. The park will have a unique amenity, a 12-foot-tall glass-fiber reinforced concrete climbing wall. The park will also have climbing activities for younger kids, a picnic area, and a full-size sport field, and a lot of other really cool amenities. So again, you're not approving this. It will come through later this year in a location and extent. The engineering plans are being developed by the consultants that we have here today as we speak. And yeah, I just wanted to show you that because you don't get to see the amazing parks that are approved for us to be building. We've actually built a park in 6A, and we have two parks that are being built in 6B and 6C. And of course, with the generosity of Douglas County, we are building Prospect Park in 3A. So lots going on. Again, on to approval criteria 50309. South Metro Fire District will provide fire services to 7A. Douglas County Sheriff's Office will provide police protection. XL will provide gas and electric services to 7A. Lumiere Fiber will provide telecommunications services to 7A. They provide really extremely fast fiber internet, and our community really appreciates that. And then, of course, Douglas County School District will be the education provider for So as is mentioned in the staff report, a final plat may be approved if it meets the following criteria. Since I dedicated an entire slide to each and every one of these approval criteria, I don't think it's necessary that we go through them one by one again, but I'd just like to show you the list and point out again that we meet and exceed all of the approval criteria. So to wrap it up, Sterling Ranch is supportive of the conditions of approval with a one minor language change. And the signed construction documents and technical studies, including construction plans, traffic impact analysis, drainage report, erosion control report, have been found acceptable to the Engineering Department and have been approved. They are in your packet. So on behalf of Sterling Ranch Development Company and the project team, we want to thank you for your time and your consideration for 7A. This is going to be a great addition to our community, and I would ask for your support. And we're now open for questions.
Well, Ms. Beckman, thank you so much for the remarkable presentation. You know, as a former land use attorney, it warms my soul to see beautiful communities come together. And that particular slide with the renderings for the park is just so reflective of the iconic senses of place that I know I, as one, am hoping to establish in the county with support from my colleagues. Let me ask, are you okay with the 12 conditions as presented?
Yes, we are.
And you said there was a minor language change. Do you want to highlight that for us?
Yeah, good point. We will have a Denver Water License Agreement that has to do with actually building a road across their easement. So that's more of the construction of the road. And then the easement from Denver Water is actually the land. And so we wanted to make sure that we had the Denver Water License Agreement and the easement, because we'll have to get the easement approved before recordation of the plat. It was just a clarification.
Okay, great. And I want to thank all the members of your team. I think it's really nice that everyone shows up. That really means a lot to us, and I know it's not cheap to do that, and so it's meaningful to me that you've taken the time to be here, so I appreciate that. Any further questions for the applicant?
I do. There was an email in the packet, and I'm sorry, when my computer printed it off, I don't have the page number, but it's an email from Gina Begley at Denver Water that has six corrections or comments, and they pertain to Ordway Drive, Sterling Ranch Avenue that's going to be crossing Denver Water property. Is this email and the information the reason that the addition was added to the condition?
No, that was our clarification, but all of the issues that Denver Water wanted us to clarify or change have been resolved in the email. That was our decision. It was a discussion between Brock Smithles and Kevin Johnc about the clarity that we wanted to have in our conditions of approval. And it was just caught, I think, in the last day or two, and we just wanted to clarify it.
Okay, I'm going to ask Mr. Thomas, is that your understanding as well?
That is correct.
So everything that's listed, these six points in this email from Denver Water, have been addressed?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I have no other questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. So with that, I'm going to open it up for any citizen comment. Is there any citizen comment in the room with regard to this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll open it up for any online comment. Troy, do we have any online citizen comment?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Okay, thank you, Troy. So with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
I do have a motion to approve Sterling Ranch filing number 7A Final Plat because it does meet all of the approval criteria with 12 conditions as presented. Project file SB 2023-058.
And I'll second that motion. Any further discussion? I'll just add that I would also agree that all of the legal criteria have been met. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that carries 2-0. Congratulations. So with that, we'll move on to Item 3, which is our public hearing agenda items. Item 3A is Vacation of Certain Roads in Mirabelle Village filing 1. Project file SB 2023-043. Mike Pizika, Planner, presenting for staff.
Thank you, Commissioners. Mike Pizika, representing Planning Services. And the application before you is a request for a road vacation to vacate several unused and unbuilt rights of way within Mirabelle Village filing 1. Project number is SB 2023-043. Gary Lorenz and Camille Tazi, Principals of Larkspur LLC, are abutting landowners and the applicants. The request is for approval of a road vacation of approximately 18.14 acres of right-of-way in Mirabelle Village filing 1. The road segments are 60 feet wide, except for Sinclair Boulevard, which is approximately 190 feet wide, and of varying lengths. The vacation will allow for the disposal of unused and unbuilt right-of-way while still providing legal access to all existing properties. A private access easement is proposed to provide access to Lot 1, Block 18, that extends to Ivy Sea Drive, which is existing public right-of-way. If approved, the vacated right-of-way will be combined with multiple half-acre lots owned by the applicants that are being replatted into three larger lots via an associated administrative replat. The intent of Article 7B is to provide a review and approval process for various types of public road vacation requests. The road vacation process begins with the submission of an application, following a review period by referral agencies and courtesy notices to abutting landowners, public notices given for public hearings before the Planning Commission and Board of County Commissioners. One adjacent property owner provided comments on the proposal, and they are included with the staff report. Engineering Services had no comments on the proposed right-of-way vacation, including the private access easement for Lot 1, Block 18. The Planning Commission heard the request at its May 6, 2024, public hearing. No members of the public were present or spoke. The Planning Commission recommended approval by a vote of 6 to 0. Take a look at the vicinity map. The project area is labeled with a red star and is in the south-central area of the county, about a mile northwest of the town of Larkspur. The zoning map here, the right-of-ways are zoned suburban residential. The road segments, as you can see on this slide, run north, south, east, and west, and are located within Mirabelle Village filing 1, which is southeast Sinclair Boulevard, west of Sable Boulevard, and approximately a half-mile east of South Perry Park Road, which is right here on the slide. This is an aerial of the project site, showing the road segments to be vacated in red. The only lot not owned by the applicants is Lot 1, Block 18, which is shown here on this slide. I do want to point out that the map that was included in the staff report pointed to the wrong lot, but this lot shown here is the correct lot, so I apologize for that error in the report. And that Lot 1, Block 18, it's not part of the administrative replat that is currently being reviewed with the right-of-way vacation request. The right-of-way, rights-of-way were established with the original plat for Mirabelle Village filing 1 in 1971 and have not been improved. Properties in Mirabelle Village are zoned suburban residential and require central water and sewer to be developed. Mirabelle Village filing 1 is not within a water and sewer district, so existing lots do not have access to central services, and there are no existing structures served by the right-of-way proposed to be vacated. This is another aerial photo showing the undeveloped Mirabelle Village lots and rights-of-way. Prairie Park Road is again on the left side of the slide. And again, another perspective, north is to the left on this slide. The red lines are the proposed rights-of-way to be vacated within Mirabelle Village filing 1. There is an existing private access easement that extends out to Perry Park Road, but that is not part of this application request. The vacation exhibit shows the area of right-of-way to be vacated in gray hatching. North is to the left on this slide. The vacation resolution provides the ownership of the vacated road segments will be distributed to the owners of properties owned by the applicants. In addition, the vacation resolution reserves a private access easement for Lot 1, Block 18, again shown here on this slide, which will provide access to Ivy Sea Drive, which is existing public right-of-way down here, which is not being vacated. If the right-of-way vacation is approved, then the applicants are proposing the creation of three new lots that will absorb the vacated right-of-way, being administrative replat that is being processed concurrently with this right-of-way application. This is a list of the approval standards for road vacation that are discussed in detail within the staff report. Staff has assessed the application in accordance with Article 7B of subdivision resolution. Should the board find that the approval standards for the road vacation are met, the following proposed conditions should be considered for inclusion in the motion. Condition number one, prior to recordation of the road vacation resolution, all minor technical corrections shall be made to the satisfaction of Douglas County. Condition number two, concurrent with the recordation of the road vacation resolution, the applicants shall record the private access easement for access to Lot 1, Block 18, Mirabelle Village filing 1. Condition number three, concurrent with the recordation of the road vacation, the applicants shall complete and record the concurrently submitted administrative replat application. And condition number four, all commitments and promises made by the applicant or the applicant's representative during the public hearing and/or agreed to in writing and included in the public record have been relied upon by the Board of County Commissioners in approving the application. Therefore, such approval is conditioned upon the applicant's full satisfaction of all such commitments and promises. Section 709B07 sets forth the parameters for the Board's determination on road vacation requests, as noted on this slide. And this concludes staff presentation. I can take questions, otherwise the applicants do have a brief presentation.
Great, thank you, Mike. Any questions for staff?
Yes, Mike, if you could go back to the slide that shows the one lot that is not included in all of these. So help me understand that if we vacate this road, all of these roads that are in this request, how will those owners have access to their lot? Can you show me with the light?
Sure. All the other lots in here are owned by the applicants. So they could, if you owned a lot over here, you could still have access via this public right-of-way that will remain. There's a public right-of-way up here that is going to remain and terminate, and then there's this public right-of-way on the south that will remain. And then for Lot 1, this private access easement will extend all the way down to this existing public right-of-way, so they will still have legal access to their property.
Okay, I remember working with Gary Lorenz and some others, and we got some legislation passed, gosh, I forget how many years ago, that the county put gates across many of these lots down here because it wasn't safe to get into. So will people have, will this family, the Cadiz family, have to go through a gate in order to get to their lot? Do you know?
They will, and they have to now.
They have to now?
Yes.
And so that access will remain for them if we approve this request?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I have no other questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. I don't have any additional questions at this time. I'll invite the applicant to come forward. If you want to just state your name and spell it and where you're from, we'd be pleased to hear from you.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Camille Tazi, and I reside at 6250 Statter Circle in Larkspur, Douglas County. Thank you. I'm here today with my partner, Gary Lorenz, and our consultant, Marion Woodward, who has helped us navigate through the process. And I also would like to thank Mike and the rest of the county staff for putting together these exhibits which were presented today. So Gary and I are not real estate agents, so we're not developers. We're actually longtime residents of Douglas County. I've been in Douglas County for over 20 years, and I think Gary has been here just as long. We, let me make sure I know how to work this thing. Nope. Which one? Okay, here we are. So we presently, as you can see from this map, showing where Mirabelle Village is in comparison to the rest of the area. This is a zoning map from Douglas County. As you can see, Mirabelle Village was originally plotted in 1972 with 500 or so half-acre lots, as well as a golf course which was going to serve that development. Unfortunately, at the time that the village was plotted, the developer had made no allowance for the required infrastructure. It was very interesting this morning to listen to Sterling Ranch and all of the stuff they had to provide in order to move ahead with the development. Probably not the case in 1972 because all of these lots eventually were left without the appropriate infrastructure in order to commence building for a SR permit or an SR suburban residential zoning. Eventually, the property was sold and went into bankruptcy. And Commissioner Thomas, you referred to the effort of the community a couple of years ago to try to resolve some of the issues. And what had happened by 2020 is, as you can see from some of these pictures, the area had become primarily a wasteland. All of those, the 100 half-acre lots, you know, it was party central. You had keggers back there, you had bonfires back there. People were using the area for off-road vehicles, for dirt bikes, and so on. And you can see from some of these pictures, the area became, and the residents around the area, became quite concerned because, you know, fires were being lit in the areas and so forth, and we were worried that, you know, the area could go up in flame later, really, if we didn't do something. And so the community got together, we went through a number of meetings, and we were able... We went through a number of meetings, and we were able to, through the state, give the Commissioners the power of basically restricting access to the area by putting some of those gates at key roads and restricting the access to landowners only in the area. So the existing lot owners, including the Cadiz lots and including all of the remaining lots in the area, have access, but they have to be, basically, they have to document that they have property in the area, and then they're granted access codes to the gates so that they can go in. Where we are today, as you can see from this exhibit, is we have 158 remaining half-acre lots throughout Maribel Village filing one. Over 89% of the property is not controlled by six entities in the area, so six landowners that have aggregated a number of these half-acre lots when they've come up for sale, that have purchased the golf course when the development went bankrupt. And so you can see the six major landowners highlighted in this slide. And Gary and I, through Phoenix-Larksburg, our holding entity, own 100 lots to the west of Maribel Village. I don't know if I can make this thing well. That pink area is the 100 lots that we own. You can see it is very much to the west of the development. By vacating those roads and developing that more in line with the surrounding community, which are A1 lots, zoned A1 lots, large ranches, smaller ranches, mostly horse property, I think it would be more in line with the Douglas Master Comprehensive Plan. And also, what we have made sure that by vacating these roads, we would not impede on any of the real property rights of the existing 158 landowners that still have half-acre lots in this area. Oops. So lastly, this is a zoom in on what we are here asking the Commissioners to approve. It is the vacation of those 18.1 acres of unimproved, unused county right-of-ways, which are highlighted in red on the left-hand side of this slide. In green are the right-of-ways, the county right-of-ways, that will remain in place, giving the balance of the half-acre lot owners and the Cadiz lot access back to the county right-of-ways. We are asking you to vacate about 1.7 miles of unimproved county right-of-way, again in red. And we think that by doing so, what will happen post-vacation, and what we are looking to do is to construct, or three lots, as you can see plotted on the right-hand side of that diagram, with an easement, that area shaded in blue, for the Cadiz to be able to still have access back to the green county right-of-ways. And what we are thinking this will do is a couple of things. It'll relieve the county of 1.7 miles of liabilities managing those roads, patrolling those roads, and so forth. I think what it does is aligns this area of Maribel Village, which really has no foreseeable way of being developed as residential community or on half-acre lot. It gives that area an opportunity to be developed or presenting three lots. We think that what that will do is, if you go through the map, it actually increases the revenue and real estate taxes to the county. And lastly, I think, I think very important is that we're maintaining Mr. Cadiz's right, you know, to those right-of-ways. And when we're talking about vacating those...
Do you want to go up? Do you want to go up or...
Just trying to go to the next slide. There it goes. Those are the, just to give you a visual of what those existing unimproved right-of-ways look like. I mean, it was difficult for us to even find those roads when we had to put the post notifications out there saying that this hearing would be held. And so, you know, we're not asking the county to vacate existing right-of-ways or even dirt road. If you didn't know where those right-of-ways were, you would think it just was one large pasture. And so with that, if the Commissioners have any questions, or myself or my partner Gary would be happy to answer them.
Great. Thank you so much for that presentation. Any questions for the applicant?
So Mr. Tazi, are you a joint owner with, is it a Phoenix-Larksburg? What was the name of your...
Phoenix-Larksburg is the entity in which we've been purchasing all of these lots and is the owner right now of all these. So Gary and I are the two owners of Phoenix-Larksburg, the sole owners of that entity.
So do you just watch the internet and sales when these people finally figure out that these lots are never going to be anything but a liability to them, and then offer to buy them?
That's exactly what we've done. I think Gary was spearheading that effort. I can let him speak to that directly.
Sure. Thanks, Camille. Gary Lorenz, 2080 Skyview Lane, spelled L-A-W-R-E-N-Z. So back, a gentleman had acquired these lots over a period of 20 years. I got to know him by buying lots. He owned a few of them behind our property. And talking with him, he had aggregated at the time, I think approximately, 74, about 80 of these lots, and had always asked him if he was ever interested in selling them to please contact us. And sure enough, about three years ago in July, July 2020, he approached us and had an offer from another developer to purchase these lots. So I had called Camille because we had an interest in this area, and we talked about what we wanted to do with them, which is exactly this, is to turn it into something more in line with the Douglas County Comprehensive Master Plan, which is three large 20-acre residential lots. We met with county staff prior to purchasing them, of course, without any commitment, but to give, get their insurance that they would support the project. And so here we are about three years later, looking for approval. That's how we acquired them. And since then, we've acquired 14 others to fill in the gap. We've also approached the Cadiz as well, but have not had a response back from the Cadiz. We've approached him a number of different times to purchase his lot, but have never been able to communicate with him.
Well, I remember working with you and Mr. Kowalski, and I think we had a conversation with the Haywards.
Yep.
And I want to thank you on behalf of the community for understanding this problem when this was all plotted in 1971 without a plan for the roads and the infrastructure. I think a lot of people have bought these lots thinking they were going to build their dream home, and then they learned the hard way that maybe they'd been suckered, whatever happened. But you, I think, have prevented a lot of people from getting in this jam, and by buying all these lots and putting them together for a purpose to perhaps build 20-acre lots, I think is a community service. And I spent a lot of time with you and the others, learning how this had happened and how you're trying to fix it for you and your neighbors, because primarily for safety reasons. People are going back there and shooting, doing fires. You showed me where someone was shooting towards a target, and it went right towards the Hayward's house.
Correct.
So thank you for what you are doing. I think this has taken a lot of work on your part and time, and I hope that after we have citizen comment, we understand everything that's on the plate here, that you will be rewarded for the efforts you have made in the name of keeping our community safe. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas, and I would echo that as a former land use attorney that, you know, it's challenging when people buy into a community that has no infrastructure, no metro district, no way to pay for those critical improvements that are necessary to have a dream home. And much like what Commissioner Thomas said, I think visionary entrepreneurs in our community that work well together creatively to identify solutions are really appreciated. So to both of you and your team, I think it's, I would agree. I think it's a public service, and it's, I know it's a long window, three years, but we're glad you're here.
Sure.
So, yeah, absolutely. Okay. With that, let me open it up for any citizen comment. Is there any citizen comment in the room with regard to this item? Okay, seeing none, let me open it up to online citizens to see if there's any online comment. Troy?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Okay, thank you. And with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion. And before we do that, let me make sure that you're okay with the four conditions as presented. Sir, you are okay with those four? Oh, okay. Just wanted to make sure we have that for the record. Okay, great. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes, I would just like to put on the record that I have read the letter. I have a copy of it here that is signed by Benjamin Cadiz about him wanting to keep his access to his property. And in fact, this plan that you have before us, if we vote to allow to vacate the 18 or so acres of roadway to this Phoenix-Larksburg...
LHC.
That Mr. Cadiz will still have, and his family will still have access to their property.
Yes, ma'am. Through that, private easement to the unimproved road system.
Right. And with that in mind, I'm willing to make a motion.
I'll accept that motion.
I have a motion to approve a resolution vacating certain roads in Maribel Village filing one, located in Section 19 Township 9 South, range 67 West of the Sixth Principal Meridian, Douglas County, Colorado, because it does meet all of the approval criteria with four conditions as presented. Project file SB 2023-043.
And I'll second that motion. Any further discussion?
I am in support of this, and again, I thank the neighbors for coming together to help solve a community problem.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I would agree with that. Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that passes two zero. Congratulations. So with that, we'll move on to our next item for the public hearing agenda items, which is 7165 North Delbert Road rezoning, project file ZR 2023-018. I see Eric Pavlenek, not Heather Scott. Is that right on this one?
That's correct.
Okay. Presenting for staff. Hi, Eric.
Eric Pavlenek, representing Planning Services. I'm filling in for Heather Scott this afternoon. The request is a rezone, sorry, the request is to rezone a 35.75 acre parcel from agricultural one to large rural residential. The product number is ZR 2024-018. Robin Brown is here on behalf of the owners. Request is to rezone a 35 acre parcel from A1 to LRR. The intent of the rezoning process is to provide a process to amend the official zone district map with regard to the area of any zoning district in accordance with Section 24-67-101 of the Colorado Revised Statutes. The rezoning process begins with the submission of an application, following a review period by referral agencies in the public. Notice is given for public hearings before the Planning Commission and Board of County Commissioners. No comments were received from any referral agencies nor abutting property owners. The Planning Commission heard the rezoning request at its June 3, 2024, hearing and voted unanimously to recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners. Once again, no members or anyone from the public spoke at that hearing. The subject property outlined in red is located at the intersection of Singing Hills Road and Delbert Road, which is just east of, sorry, west of Elbe County. Pinecrest Community Church is located in the southeast portion of the parcel, which is shown in this corner here. As background, the site was originally zoned A1 in 1955. The Pinecrest Community Church was approved through a SIP in 2000. Before you, as a proposed rezoning exhibit, the applicant would like to subdivide the parcel into two lots. In the future, a 20 acre parcel for the existing church and a 15 acre parcel for future single-family residential. Following are some site photos. This is a view to the southwest from Delbert Road towards Singing Hills Road and shows the existing church. This photo here is taken from the telecommunication tower access road, which is adjacent to the Delbert Road, looking west. This is a view west through the middle of the property from Singing Hills Road. And finally, a view to the east from the southern entrance of the church along Singing Hills Road. The approval standard for a rezoning request are set forth in Section 25 and are listed on this slide. Staff's assessment of the approval standards are discussed in detail in the staff report. Section 2504.09 of the zoning resolution sets forth the parameters for the Board's action on a rezoning request, which is noted on this slide. This concludes my presentation. Available for any questions at this time. Otherwise, Robin Brown is here on behalf of the owner.
Great. Any question?
They do not have a formal presentation, but can answer any questions if you have any.
Okay, great. Any questions for staff or the applicant?
You know, I read through this packet. I thought it was interesting, looking back through history, that this was part of the Waldine Ranch originally, and was sold to this church 20 years ago. And here we've been doing Waldine property again. So it's interesting to see how all these pieces play together. So it looked like there was a parcel bought for 35 acres in 2000, 2001. Church is on one part, so they want to keep the church on 15 acres and rezone the whole thing and separate it?
Let me go back. Yeah, so currently it's one parcel, 35 acre plus parcel that has a church on the property, which is in the southeast corner here. The church is to remain. The rezoning would allow the applicant to potentially subdivide in the future. That would have to go through the subdivision process, but they are looking to accomplish the rezoning first. But the church would remain, and I believe the, would be split up, so the church would have one lot and then a future residential to the west there. That's my understanding.
And that second step will come to us eventually. All this does is rezone it from agricultural to large rural residential?
Yep. That's correct. Yeah, going from A1 to LRR, large rural residential.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that for me. And also, I don't remember seeing any, anybody in the packet who submitted a letter opposed to this. Did I miss something?
No, there was no adjacent property owners or members of the public had any opposition towards the request.
Okay. Thank you, Eric, for clarifying that. I have no other questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas, and I have no questions. With that, let me open it up for any citizen comment. Is there any citizen comment in the room or online with regard to this item?
Commissioner, I have no online comment.
Thank you, Troy. And with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
I have a motion to approve a resolution rezoning a parcel of land totaling 35.75 acres located in Douglas County, Colorado, from agricultural one to large rural residential at 7165 North Delbert Road, project file ZR 2023-018.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. I'll second that motion. Any further discussion?
I have none.
Seeing none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that passes two zero. Thank you very much. With that, we'll move to our final item for today, which is Item 3C, Canyon South Preliminary Plan Number 3, project file SB 2023-038. Once again, Eric Pavlenek presenting for staff.
Good afternoon, Commissioners again. Eric Pavlenek, representing Planning Services. The item for you is Canyon South Preliminary Plan Number 3. Product number is SB 2023-038. Alan Cunningham of PS Group is here as the applicant's representative and has a presentation following my presentation. The request is for approval of a preliminary plan consisting of 182 single-family residential lots, six tracks and associated public roads on approximately 307 acres in the Canyon South plan development. The intent of the... The intent of the preliminary plan process is to provide an in-depth analysis of the proposed subdivision as outlined on this slide. The preliminary plan process begins with the submittal of application following comments by staff. The request is forwarded to referral agencies. At the beginning of the referral period, courtesy notifications are sent out to budding landowners. We did receive public comment from an adjacent property owner located west of Crowfoot Valley Road. In general, the public comment focused on traffic and impacts to public safety. Public notice is then provided and the request is heard by the planning commission prior to the board hearing this afternoon. Referral comments were standard in nature. The Colorado Geographic Survey did provide comments noting concerns with six lots located in the preliminary plan layout. The applicant has provided an updated Geotech report to address these comments. The report and prescribed mitigation has been accepted by CGS as noted in an email provided on June 7, 2024. The planning commission considered the request for approval at a public hearing on June 3, 2024. The planning commission discussion focused on the lack of review of the Geotech report, which was not provided at that time. No adjacent property owner or member of the public spoke at that hearing. The planning commission recommended approval of the preliminary plan, subject to the four conditions proposed by staff by a vote of 5 to 0. The site outlined in red... sorry, indicated by the red star is located in the northeast portion of the county, along the southeast side of Crowfoot Valley Road. The site outlined in red is Zone PD. Zooming into the site, you'll see the aerial of the preliminary plan boundary. As background, the PD was established in 2004 and the first preliminary plan and final plat was approved by the board in 2006 and 2007. Various plats have been approved over the years. The current request conforms to the Canyon South PD Ninth Amendment, which was approved administratively in May of this year. This slide shows the overall preliminary plan boundary exhibit, which is in PA 1 of the PD. Following are some site photos from Long Story Avenue. This is a view looking east through the site. Another view looking north. And finally, northeast. The approval standards for a preliminary plan request are set forth in Section 403 of the subdivision resolution and are listed on the slide. Staff's assessment of the approval standards are discussed in detail in the staff report. At the time of the writing of the staff report, the updated Geotech report had not been reviewed by CGS. CGS has now reviewed the supplemental information and has no objection to the preliminary plan request. Based on the new information, staff's assessment is that the approval standards 403.02 and 403.05 are met. Staff has valued the preliminary plan request in accordance with Article 4 of the county's subdivision resolution. Should the board find that approval standards for the preliminary plan are met, staff proposes the following conditions to be considered in the motion. Condition number one, during construction activity within the development, the applicant's successor in sign shall take all reasonable care to watch for historic resources, paleontological resources, and other cultural history resources and shall immediately notify Douglas County and complete an appropriate Colorado Office of Archaeological and Historic Preservation data management forms in the event of such discovery. Condition number two, during construction activity within the development, the applicant, its successor in a science shall conduct a burrowing owl study. If any earth moving will take place between March 15 and October 31st. Condition number three, Colorado Parks and Wildlife literature shall be made available to both prospective homeowners and home buyers regarding the existence of wildlife in the area and how to minimize conflicts. Condition number four, technical corrections to the record copy of the preliminary plan exhibit shall be made to the satisfaction of Douglas County. And condition number five, all commitments and promises made by the applicant or the applicant's representative during the public hearing and/or agreed to in writing and including in the public record have been relied upon the Board of County Commissioners. In approving the application, therefore, such approval is considered upon the applicant's full satisfaction of all such commitments and promises. Section 405.08 of the subdivision resolution sets forth the parameters for the board's action on a preliminary plan request, which is noted on the slide. This concludes my presentation. As stated, Alan Cunningham has a presentation as well.
Alan Cunningham, that's C-U-N-N-I-N-G-H-A-M with PCS Group, 200 Calamath Street, Denver, Thanks for being here this afternoon. On behalf of Heinz, I'm pleased to be here to present this third preliminary plan to you. Sorry about that. Seems like it wasn't that long ago we were here for filing for a plat. So preliminary plan number three. Before we dive into it, I'll just introduce the members of our team. As mentioned, I'm Alan Cunningham, planning and landscape architecture. Richard Cross with Heinz, the landowner, is here, as is Brian Moss, civil engineer with Cover 3 Engineering. Aaron Boucher with CTL Thompson, the geotech side of things is here, as is Lindsay Leida, representative from Otten Johnson. So with this preliminary plan, as you can see on the colored vicinity map to the right, this one's the... essentially the, well, hopefully the last preliminary plan for Canyon South. It encompasses the last 182 lots within the entitled 968 from the PD. The image on the right with the colors on it, the colors represent previously platted lots that came via the two original preliminary plans. The image on the left, you can see the 182 lots in the darker color at the upper part of the exhibit. And then the previously platted 786 lots in lighter gray to the south. As mentioned, the original PD was approved in 2004 and I think the first preliminary plan implats in '06, '07. And over time, obviously, development and construction's been proceeding from the south generally to the north. Zooming in, Eric showed this one too. These are the 182 lots in this preliminary plan. The boundaries extend a little further south, but that's all open space tracks. This shows where all of the lots are. Generally speaking, this preliminary plan's bounded by Long Story Ave on the south, which is the main looping road through Canyon South/McAnta. The western boundary, Crowfoot Valley Road. And then the northern and eastern side of the preliminary plan is the previously dedicated 450-acre McCanta Regional Park. And then this preliminary plan, in addition to the lot shown here, also includes multiple different tracks and a couple hundred acres of open space. This overlay just shows where this preliminary plan falls within the PD. This is the most recently approved PD Amendment Number 9. And that area highlighted in orange is the boundaries of this preliminary plan number 3. As mentioned, that includes the final 182 lots within McCanta, and these all fall within the boundaries defined by PA 1 in this PD and are compliant with the provisions of that PD. You've seen a lot of these approval standard slides today. I won't go in depth through these. I think Eric did a great job in his staff report of going through each one of these. So certainly, we can address enough questions if there is any. And so in summary, this preliminary plan number 3 looks to approve preliminary plan 3 for the available plating of the final 182 lots within Canyon South, staying within the vested property rights for the 968 units that are within the PD. It's consistent with the recently approved Canyon South PD Amendment Number 9. And wanted to thank staff for working with us to assure that it meets the preliminary plan approval standards of the county. And in this one, there's over... just given the proportions of preliminary plan 3, it's 307 acres. And with these lots, they're a very small component of it. About 80% of the ground is within open space tracks and parks, so remaining consistent with sort of the development patterns of Canyon South to date, where the homes are clustered on the ridges and flatter spots and surrounded by large amounts of open space. I can leave that one up. So with that, we're happy to entertain any questions you might have for us.
Great. Well, thank you for that presentation. Any questions for the applicant?
So, Mr. Cunningham, on this picture right here, it shows that big green area that's McCanta Regional Park. I think you said it's 450 acres?
Correct.
It's interesting, we had a conversation yesterday about parks and open space and trails funding, and someone brought up McCanta, and I think Commissioner Lane said he didn't know anything about it. So is... are you... do you have any information to educate us about what McCanta Regional Park will be?
A little bit. We have coordinated with Parks and Rec Department just to see where things were, mostly because they want to make sure that any trails within McCanta at the boundaries will align with what's there. From the plans I've seen just in talking with them with trails, what I recall is there's a couple of different systems of looping trails throughout the community. I think some of them are intended for equestrian use and then other for hiking. And there's a fitness component, I think, given some of the grade within the park. And it would be kind of more up in that area. Because if I recall, they come in with a small parking area and up in the center part, there's... I think there must be enough grade that... I don't know how big of an incline, but I think maybe it'll have some stairs and availability for people to run the stairs and do those sorts of fitness activities. That's sort of my recollection from when I saw it, just kind of trying to make sure that the trails were aligned.
Okay, thank you. I have no other questions about this project.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. With that, I'll open it up for any citizen comment. Is there any citizen comment in the room or online with regard to this item?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Thank you, Troy. With that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
Did you ask about conditions?
Thank you for that. Are you okay with the five conditions as presented?
We are.
Okay.
Then I have a motion to approve the Canyon South Preliminary Plan Number 3 because it does meet all of the approval criteria with five conditions as presented, project file SB 2023-038.
And I'll second that motion. Any further discussion?
I have none.
I would just add that I believe in my review of the packet that all of the legal criteria and approval standards have been met. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that carries 2-0. Congratulations.
Thank you.
So with that, our next land use meeting and public hearing will be held on Tuesday, June 25, 2024, at 2:30 PM. We are adjourned.